Daniel exhibits outstanding.
Whoa.
Now we're working.
Daniel exhibits outstanding work ethic. He continuously strives to learn more and is currently increasing his capabilities in paramedic school. Daniel has had rescued numerous dogs and cats and other animals from confined spaces and in structure fires. He aggressively searches for victims in structure fires, showing dedication and courage in the face of danger. He steps up to lead and participate in city events and department fire prevention presentations to impart safety skills to the next generation as well as to his senior community. He uses his bilingual speaking proficiency to communicate to the Hispanic population on medical calls and in fire prevention demonstrations. To speak informally, Daniel's the one that comes out of every structure fire dirty because he gets in and gets the job done. He's the one that kneels next to every hurting, nervous, or distressed patient, looks them in the eye, and treats them with equal kindness and expertise, and he works every year to do better at his job. And based on that recommendation, I just got noticed today that out of all the cities that recommended somebody, Daniel Cota was selected to be the 2021 firefighter of the year for this organization. So I notified him and they're gonna have a luncheon at VAST for him to present the award.
Fantastic.
That's great.
Thank you, chief. Pam? Nothing. City Attorney? Nothing to add. Public Works Director?
If anybody wants to see the code enforcement report, just what was excluded from your packet. They finished up Volker Waste last month. Thanksgiving is coming up. Just remember, we won't be running on Thursday and Friday of next week, and happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you. City Engineer?
Actually, I don't have anything to add to what reports in the file unless there's any questions, and I will second. Hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you. City Planner?
Nothing to add.
Project Architect?
Good evening, Councilman. Just a quick update. Police Station, right now, the targeted move-in date is unknown. Still waiting on some furniture, still waiting on 911 systems to be in place, so I don't have a targeted date for that yet for you. It's kind of an unknown. We assume maybe end of November, beginning of December, but no commitment on that side. There has been a slight update on the signage installation, so we were targeting, we were told, November 19th. Right now, the signage for both Fire and Police is gonna be ready, completed on December 2nd, so that means the installation will come sometime after that, I'm assuming probably the week after that. Good news on Fire, on the Police Station, excuse me. So we've received all the final pay applications for the construction aspects of it. From Lingo Construction, there is a net overall construction savings of $48,503 off of the total cost of construction. For the Fire Station, just a brief update on recently completed work. They're currently working on in-wall electrical data in the office and sleep areas, some overhead, continued overhead mechanical electrical plumbing, rough-in, interior wall framing in the apparatus space. They're doing some final metal building trim work, gutters, trim, fascias, about a week left on that. The gas line has been run from ONG up to the building. And then some upcoming work. Drywall will begin to appear later in the lower portion of the building, the office and sleep areas. They'll continue to work on MEP overhead rough-in. They expect paving and drives to be, beginning to be installed next week, and also the electrical from OG&E will continue to progress, getting electrical connections. So other than that, really, there's no other financial updates or changes, and we're still targeting January 21 completion on the Fire Station.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Item number six. Mike gets to his annual.
Annual Stormwater. The EPA required communities to enter Phase 1 back in the 60s, the Clean Water Act. War Acres and surrounding smaller communities entered in 2005 to participate in the stormwater program. So we have a stormwater program. There's basically six minimum control measures. They determined that construction site activities contributed sediment to the waterways and pollution, so that's a big, that's a big. When you go to construction, you'll see silt fencing, rumble strips, that sort of thing. We also, in part of our program, we bought a street sweeper. We use that to clean the street surfaces. That removes hopefully salt, all sorts of, I'm amazed at how much it actually picks up every year, several tons and hundreds of cubic yards of dirt and trash and so forth. So we have the stormwater report. We have brochures out in the lobby that encourages people to not spray pesticides before rain events, to dispose of motor oil properly. One estimate was is there's approximately three, three equivalent Exxon Valdez amount of oil that's disposed throughout the United States without being recycled. So everybody contributes to this, and we have it. If anybody's interested, shoot me an email.
Very interesting reading, right? Very interesting reading.
Oh, very interesting.
Thank you, Mike. Item number seven is final public hearing discussion of possible action on a sign, variance for a sign to be placed at 5909 Northwest Expressway. Applicant Bruce Edwards.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Ryan.
Yay.
Godwin.
Yay.
Tucker.
Yay.
Montaire.
Evans.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yay.
Mayor.
Yes.
Motion approved.
And Matt can explain some of this further in legalese. I will say this item's been around long before me. I know that Pat Woolley worked on this for a number of years when he was mayor. It's always been denied before as they did not meet many of our ordinance restrictions. They brought this to the city every year as if it was on a tickler file. I'm not sure how you guys did it every year. Seems like it was always the same time. They've never met our restrictions before now. ODOT put the right-of-way in front of their building up for sale at the request not to do so by War Acres in Oklahoma City. They now admit they probably should not have sold this property, but it's a done deal. The right-of-way is near where the Oklahoma City is putting a pedestrian bicycle bridge across the expressway. You might have seen this on Channel 9, which Pam showed me this afternoon. With this company now owning the right-of-way land in front of their building, this took away one of the last restrictions that we had, that we had remaining, that you had to own the property where the sign would be located, and it had to be adjacent to your property. They've now met this criteria. So I'll open the public hearing if Mr. Edwards is here. Anybody has any questions for him?
Good evening, City Council. Mayor Mickley and the members of the council. My name's Louis Lanair. I'm the attorney for the applicants here. If I could be permitted a few minutes to speak.
Absolutely.
Thank you. The owners of the building, Warren Silverberg and David Friedman, they both live in California. They were unable to be here this evening, and they asked that I be here on their behalf. First, I just want to thank the council for all the work in getting it this far. As Mayor Mickley indicated, it's been a long time getting it to this point. We wanted to extend our thanks to the city staff as well. I know there was some work that had to be done to send out required notices due to the variance request, and so we appreciate those efforts. And then I also want to thank Mr. Love. He worked with us through some, through some specifics in the code to make sure that we revise our application to get it where it is today. So I wanted to point out, if you had any questions in the materials that have been submitted, we have here this evening Phil Johnson and Bruce Edwards, who are with Dowmark Signs. They designed the proposed sign that you probably have seen in your packets. We also have here Terry Haynes of SMC Consulting Engineers, who put together some of the other exhibits that demonstrate that the sign meets the setback requirements and will not interfere with the Oklahoma City pedestrian and bike path. With that, I will be happy to address any questions or direct any questions that might be more appropriate to some of the other folks here.
It's nice to put a face with a name. I've been talking to you for five years.
Yes, it is.
Mr. Mayor, just as, by way of introduction, this actually predates me, and I think actually goes back to.
2009.
I think it goes back to Marietta, even before Kat was mayor. You guys have seen the staff reports. This is a very odd situation where the building is in Oklahoma City because it's, that Wilshire right-of-way section line is the jurisdictional limits for our city. There's that weird little triangle piece that, just to be blunt, has absolutely no value except to the people that own the building. They've owned the property for, I mean, years. That's how they have their driveway to be able to get into it. Before, one of the first things that Bob Dernigan and I talked about when we switched over from Bob to me as City Attorney was this issue. For years, we, the issue was the right-of-way for Wilshire, it was a section line. Yes, it was never gonna get used, but we had a very clear, you couldn't have a sign in the right-of-way. There were drainage concerns, which have been addressed. There were location of the sign in regards to OG&E easements, that's been addressed. The lone issues that remain are two code provisions. One that says you can't advertise for activity on one parcel that's gonna occur off-location, as I've addressed in my staff memo. Outside of somebody going to consult the county assessor's records and pull out plat maps, would anybody know that this was a different location than the building? I mean, it's got the common driveway, the, one of the analogies I used with the mayor was, you've got a couple properties where you've got multiple lots that are all under common ownership, and you've got a business that has a building that crosses lot lines. Technically speaking, if they had a lot over here that they use for parking and wanted to put a sign, that would technically violate the code because it wouldn't occur on the same lot. Here, these are contiguous. These are connected, they're under common ownership. As I outlined in the staff report, I think the requirements for variance have been met. The other restriction was that, and this goes back to, there's a few of you that were still here when we had the many, 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 many hours of meetings about the sign code, and one of the big topics was pole signs, with a couple people that wanted to get rid of them outright, a couple people that wanted to keep them but limit them. The compromise was improve pole signs, not your traditional metal pole, but improve something around it that John or Mark or Craig could probably speak, you know, more intelligently than me. One of the restrictions, ironically, the debate centered around billboards. You know, traditional billboards, you got a big sign that advertises for something miles away. Ironically, the way that it ended up in the code is that if you're gonna have a pole sign, you can only advertise for one business on the pole sign, but every other type of sign that you can have, you can advertise for multiple businesses. Well, this location has several tenants within it, they'd wanna be able to advertise for that. My recommendation, and I think Mark joins me on this as well, is that it meets the variance requirements, and frankly, we should probably revisit that discussion about whether or not that restriction should stay in the code. So my recommendation is that both these requested variances meet the code requirements. I did hear, the mayor had heard a rumbling that there was concern about whether or not this sign might be used to advertise for truly billboard-type activities, activities outside of this location. That's not gonna be the case. In fact, you've got my memo. My recommendation is that you grant the variance with the restrictions that it would only be applicable if it was under common ownership and control, and that has to advertise for the building that it's contiguous with. And so there would not be, if granted, there would be no advertising on the sign for anything that didn't occur at the property, at the building.
And I can confirm that certainly is the intent of the applicant. And Mr. Love communicated those proposed restrictions to me in advance of the meeting. I've talked about those with the applicant, and they have no problems with those conditions if the variance were to be granted.
And I know Mark's worked on it as well. If you might have questions for him, but SRB looked at the non-legal side of it to make sure that it wasn't gonna present any hazards or any flooding issues, drainage issues, and all of that has been worked out. So this more than a decade-long discussion may actually finally be coming in for a landing here tonight.
The only question I had was I assumed that because these parcels are located in two different cities, this parcel cannot be absorbed on a common deed with the other one that would do away with the separate properties?
I've got a question about whether or not, even if they detached from War Acres and annexed into Oklahoma City since it crosses a section line, whether or not you could even merge the lots together.
I assumed that was the issue.
That's a little bit farther away from my municipal law expertise, but I could see a host of concerns with that, because that would be the logical conclusion. If our border went a block north, that's essentially, we'd either say amend the code or just merge the lots, but we don't have that option here.
I thank the council for your consideration.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody in the public that has questions?
Here are no more.
I make a motion to close public hearing.
Thank you.
Second?
Evans?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yay.
Tucker?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Is it you?
No. Montaire was trying to give in. He was closer, though.
I'm just gonna call everybody. Godwin?
Hey.
Tucker?
Yes.
Montaire?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Will this, Matt, will this in any way obligate us to allow another billboard sign, which is the intent of the ordinance? Will this in any way obligate us to allow that situation to occur?
No, and particularly, that's why I wanted those restrictions on the variance. I had no concern that Mr. Lanair, his client, would have any objection to the restrictions. The reason for them is this is a truly unique situation where you've got one lot outside the city that's connected to a lot within the city. I think I may have put it in my staff memo. If this wasn't the perfect example of why we have a variance provision in the code, I'm not sure what would be. So, no, it would not obligate us to do anything unless we had some other really freakish situation like this come up.
Okay.
But we'd be making an exception specifically because we have that discretion in the right circumstance. It meets the code requirement, so I don't see a traditional billboard being able to meet the code requirements for variance.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the variance as listed.
With the two restrictions?
With all the restrictions you listed. Yes.
I'll second that.
And that was Montaire.
Yeah. Godwin didn't try and beat him this time.
Yes.
Or Tucker.
Montaire?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yay.
Godwin?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you very much. We'll see your sign soon, probably.
Two weeks. Two weeks. That's a lot of people for a sign.
Item number eight is a final public hearing discussion possible action on application for rezoning of a property from C3 to a simplified planned unit development, or SPUD. This is 4614 North MacArthur. When this item was first presented to me, I was ecstatic about it. I still am, with my only concern being that there will be apartments on the first floor. I thought it was all business on the first floor, but now it's gonna be, part of it will be apartments on that floor. Like I also said, businesses in the back of that building would not be a good item for them. This type of project that Pat Woolley started talking about years before he left as mayor, this similar, but on a much smaller scale to what I'm envisioning at 50th and MacArthur. The only thing I was to see on this, when it gets to the motion stages, whether, I would like to insert that this will never, ever, ever be a Section 8 housing, or low-income housing. It's supposed to be for upscale apartments, and I hope it will stay that way. I'd rather see an empty building than Section 8 or low-income housing. So with that, I need a motion to go into public hearing, please.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Ryan?
Yay.
Tucker?
Yep.
Schmidt?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yay.
Montaire?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And just so we note it, for the record, the applicant is present, right?
Yeah, the applicant is here. From a brief moment, as far as the staff report goes, just to let you know, this is an SPUD. This will be the second one that the City of War Acres has actually considered in the past. The other one was closer in to Town Center, and there were other issues with that. That's no longer a viable development. However, and in this instance, this SPUD, which is on page 77 of your packet, is where I'll focus mainly your attention. They have a design statement, so this SPUD functions much like the PUDs that you've looked at in the past. This does meet the criteria, and is consistent with your comprehensive plan and the Town Center overlay, providing for the C3 Neighborhood Shopping District and the Revitalization District for Town Center. In the Planning Commission, we went through a more extensive discussion on section, you know, Title 19, Section 43, and how this would relate back to the overlay District of Town Center. This is actually, as the mayor mentioned, a perfect example of a mixed-use development that is being allowed due to the Town Center Overlay District that you have. The base zoning will be C3. All of the uses that are being required are within that. The building and setbacks are all set up into the design statement. There are also, there will be a, on item seven on page 78, I'll refer to the landscaping. Oftentimes, in an SPUD or a PUD, the developer will offer up certain amenities that will go above and beyond the landscape ordinance. Currently, the developer is proposing landscaping that would exceed our ordinance. In addition to, they are looking at an alternate, and I'll flip over to that in a moment, to create new landscape pocket parks. One will be in the frontage area, and one will be in the back in the residence area. These are TIF district eligible for funding, so these alternate pocket parks are going to be wholly dependent upon if the TIF funds do become available. The applicant has already started the process to apply for the TIF funds for that. There will be a freestanding sign that will advertise the retail space as well as the residential space. And then if you'll refer to sheet number 80. Sheet number 80, this shows up, the top of the page is MacArthur. Now, the frontage for the sidewalk and all, that will be done as part of the MacArthur Bond project, so they're not having to do the upgrades in the public rights away, since that's part of the Bond project. And then there'll be, the existing building will be converted. They've got a floor plan in that shows the retail commercial in the front. I'll let the architect and the applicant talk more about that. But on sheet 81, I want to refer you to the pocket park areas, and you'll see those at adjacent to the MacArthur side, and then on the backside, they're the landscaped area with the little circular sidewalk areas. That would be a great addition. I think we're really excited about it. We're hoping that the TIF calculations will come through enough to where the funding can be available. I think there was an estimate on those that they could cost, it would be a $60,000 maximum amenity if it's available. If that many, if that much TIF funds aren't available, we'll try to modify that to as much as is available. And with that, I can, on 82 and 83 is the actual development, and I'll turn it over to the architect and the developer to talk about a little bit more of the amenities.
Excuse me, I have a question, if you would, please.
Yes, sir.
On a C3, on a PUD, not a SPUD, it talks here, height of a building. What is the maximum height that's allowed in a C3 PUD or C3 SPUD?
So in this area, you can have a maximum of...
I think it's 30 feet, Mark.
It's 30 feet, it's two stories, yeah, 35.
35.
Building height, 19.3.8 is, shall not exceed 35 feet in height.
Is that the same for a PUD? C3 PUD?
That, that is...
To answer that question, there is no specific requirement on a PUD because PUD is customized zoning, so typically, the PUD will either say, we'll follow the zoning code for this, or we'll make an exception for that, but unless the design statement says that they're gonna have a different regulation.
Right.
The underlying zoning regulation would control.
Okay. And this falls within the section, the Title 19 section, so...
Thank you.
So, in theory, if they wanted to add a third floor, that could be nego, even though it's not allowed in C3, that could be negotiated in the PUD or SPUD.
They haven't asked for it if they wanted to.
Right. Yeah, I know, I'm just saying.
They would, they would, either they would have come forward with that as part of the structural plan.
Right.
Or they would have to come back to us and amend the design statement in the SPUD to do some modification like that.
Yeah, I know they're not, but I'm just saying, if they wanted to, they could do something that's not normally traditionally allowed in the C3.
So, like the mayor, for a good example of that, let's say somewhere else in the overlay district, if somebody wanted to do that, they would come forward with a PUD within the overlay district and could do the proposal that way.
I want to do a truncated version of the contextual, what I told the Plank Commission, because we do have a few new council members who weren't here at the time that we adopted the Town Center. You probably have seen on your zoning map that you've got part of MacArthur and part of 50th that has a weird shade to it. That's your Town Center. The Town Center was adopted through a very lengthy process. The, essentially, the main highlights I want to hit are, the ordinances make clear if you're in the Town Center, you cannot rezone through traditional rezoning, you have to go through PUD or SPUD. And the purpose of the Town Center was expressly to promote people coming in to redevelop through using creative zoning and mixed-use development. One of the things that we said at the time, and I said at the Plank Commission last week, is, in adopting this, many people said that it would sit on the books, and it would take the first one to come before something else might start happening. And to this point, the only one we had was a very small residential lot that wasn't viable, and Donnie's laughing because he remembers that fun meeting, two meetings.
The house now.
This is the first viable one that you've got. The other thing I'll say, and the applicant can touch on this and correct me if I'm wrong, this property's been owned by the same owner for a very long time. It has sat vacant for a very long time. As I understand it, the property is under contract to sell to the new owner, so it hasn't sold yet, but it will be a new owner in a new day for that particular piece of property. So I just wanted to provide that context as to why are we talking about this?
I seem to remember a year or two ago that we were, had this property before us for combination.
Yep.
Yep. That's correct.
There was one concern raised at Plank Commission. It was about the back fencing and making sure that there would be fencing. They're not proposing any exception, which means that any part of the property, which is the entire back line that abuts residential, has to have a site-proof eight-foot fence. So they understand that, they're gonna, they're not proposing to accept themselves from that. They would be required to stick with that, and that seemed to appease the resident who came and spoke.
Right. There was one resident that came and spoke at Planning Commission. They back up to that. This applicant is fully intending, if the fencing needs to be replaced, they will replace it, and they want to have a consistent fence along that, so...
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So what will, what did the city give up for this? Because it's my understanding, isn't there, like, we give them a break on their taxes or on their revenue stream now and pay so much?
So, from a standpoint of the SPUD, there's no, there's no, nothing involved with this, from the SPUD. The TIF application that they do have in, that TIF funds, they're proposing and requesting the TIF funds be used to fund the pocket parks of that.
But they're not seeking preapproval of the TIF funds as a condition on pursuing this.
And that would come, that would come back to City Council.
Yeah, so they're proposing in their site plan, that's why on...
See, this one doesn't have the pocket.
So, right now, on sheet 80, you have, this is the site plan that would have the development as proposed. On sheet 81, they've added the two pocket parks, and if the TIF application and the calculations come through, and there's a certain amount of money available for that, then they would propose doing one or both of those parks. And then that TIF approval would come back to City Council.
Okay, so, are we, my concern is, you know, from what I've read on TIF, so the city's liable if this goes under, is that correct? Like, if, if...
So you've got apples and oranges here. The way TIF funds are often used is you've got a piece of property that doesn't need to be rezoned, or sometimes does need to be rezoned, but you use the leverage of the TIF to be able to try and recruit a business to come to the location, whether it's using TIF funds to increase, improve infrastructure, whatever it may be. You also have options on sales tax, rebay. You also have options on sales tax rebates. That's not what's being proposed here.
Okay, because that was my question then with the TIF, was if we were giving them some kind of sales tax break or something.
Their, their application has no sales tax component in it. It's only looking at getting reimbursed for a portion of the pocket parks if those funds are available.
Unless it exceeds my expectations dramatically, it wouldn't really be conducive for a sales tax rebate.
Now, the key to this is you have a TIF attorney and a, and consultant involved there. They will do a review of the application and they will do the formula calculation. And then, it's a balancing act, this is our first one. We certainly have, there's a limited amount of TIF funds that the entire project area, and this would be in area two, I believe. So there's a limited amount of funds, so we want to be judicious in what we decide to allow to be used for this when they're granting that. So if, if, if we decide the formula funds need to be less than what they're proposing here, then that's what we'll bring forward in our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sam Moore.
So want to pass these out, uh, list of projects, as well as the website of the developer. You can see.
That was.
Excellent, you all three got one, there you go, Roger. Thank you very much, thank you very much. Okay, there's a website on there as well, so you can go online and see some of the other stuff that, that he's worked on. As far as interior, North Park Mall, I think a lot of people have been in there, some pretty nice upgrades that he's done to that. Some pretty unique, neat buildings, you know, Zorba's an old project forum, Basil's. This is, is his new pet project, and he's coming in here and he's, he's not wanting to do a section eight. He's, he's doing upscale finishes on, on the property for the apartments. And he's expecting, you know, up, upscale prices from the people who are going to be renting those out. As we go, we're looking at one restaurant and then two retail spaces around it. Depending on who we get to come in, you know, that could be subject to change. The restaurant part of the building is going to be pretty big, so who knows, maybe there's two of them in there. But he does want sit-down restaurant for that part of the building. And that's going to be, when you're facing the building from the street, it'll be the half on the, the left side, the front left, bottom floor. Would be the restaurant, then you got the two retail spaces that would be on the, the other half. Let's see here, um, any questions?
I, I have a couple of questions, excuse me. I'm all right. I was looking at the plans and the only concern I've gotten, I'm sure that these aren't chiseled and stowed in plans, these are like drafts, I would assume. Like I say, the restaurant, it's only got one door going in, nothing going out, no outside. Not outside, but a, another.
Hi, I'm Sam Moore, I'm the architect.
Yeah.
Thank you for letting us speak to you today. The final design of the restaurant will depend upon the tenant.
Okay.
And of course, we'll meet whatever code requirements for egress, you know, are involved. So, you know, as opposed to trying to figure out where we want to put a second egress door or whatever now. You know, that will, that will come as the design for the.
I assumed that was the case, I just needed to ask to make sure.
Sure.
So.
Yeah, we will absolutely meet whatever code requirements are for egress.
Is there an elevator in this building, or will there be a requirement for an elevator?
No, I don't think so.
So, right now, what they're proposing with the retail and the restaurant space, that will be at the ground level. They will provide ADA access, accessible apartments that will be on the lower level. And then the others will be non-ADA accessible on the upstairs. There's, there, there are structural considerations and, and like what will happen is, they will have to come back for an administrative building permit review for that. There's not a requirement that they would have to provide an elevator as long as they're providing ample ADA access to a portion of the building that is available, so.
Right, it should be about a quarter of it, so.
And then, are there, and this may be for Chief Coy, two, two questions. One, is there, because there is living quarters in the top floor. Is there a requirement to have some type of external escape, like a fire escape type thing on the exterior of the building?
That's a good question, and I would need to visit the new international fire code that we just adopted on that, because I am not sure.
That's a great question.
The one in Indianapolis.
And then, and then secondary to that, is there anything about having living space above a restaurant with, like cooking surfaces? And any, any additional fire protection that they would need to provide above like the, the cooking surfaces of the restaurant as opposed to the retail?
So this is really Mike, your building inspector, but yes, there will be, there, there are codes that they will have to meet when they have the, the cooking space and the vent hood and the grease. And those all have to meet a certain building code requirement with the residential side of it. So they're, they're going to have to go through a full building code review as part of their design development process of the plans.
Okay. Any other questions?
Now, depending on the retail or the restaurant, they possibly would have to come to the council or to the planning commission to get approval to move in, yes?
Only if.
Depending on what it is.
Only if it was going to be alcohol sales that would be more than fifty percent of their gross revenues. But if it's just a restaurant where Abel's got different licensing.
Clothing store, restaurant, all that can just.
Restaurants can sell alcohol and not have to come back before, as, as long as the alcohol revenue doesn't exceed fifty percent. I, I forget how Abel refers to those, it used to be a type one, type two, and then the change in the alcohol laws, they changed their, their requirements, but.
And those, those uses would be under the underlying zoning code, correct?
Their, their, their proposal is to have C three dictate for the C three uses, R one dictate for the R one uses.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody from the audience have a question on this?
What's the square footage of the apartments?
Individually, yes, sir.
Debbie, do you have something you want to say?
I was just asking Thomas about the outdoor lighting, uh, the pocket parks, do they have like extra lighting?
Absolutely, you can, yes. The owner is, is concerned about the safety because, and the liability of the pocket parks, it's a big concern. As, as I think someone from the council alluded to the liability of the city, if the TIF funding was liable from the city. The new owner is, is very much concerned about the safety of the pocket parks, is absolutely trying to protect the high-end quality of the new property that they invest.
I think what she's asking about is it will infiltrate into her yard.
Yeah, my backyard is backed up to that and, you know, I don't want a bunch of light shining in.
Sure, absolutely, and, and that is a concern.
But I do want it lighted.
So I, in the design statement, what they talked about, they will, they will have, there's a street side light and a house side light. So they're proposing that they will have the shielded shroud type so that it won't spill over outside of the area. So they'll have their security and parking lot. And again, that's something that Mike, through the building inspection process, will be looking at that from that standpoint.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other question that I had was that, that, how high is this lighting supposed to be mounted? Right?
Four feet, yeah, I believe that says four feet. But it cannot, it cannot shine in your backyard at all, at all.
Absolutely.
Not fully.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Schmidt.
Yay.
Ryan.
Yay.
Von Thayer.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Godwin.
Yay.
Mayor.
Yay.
Okay, this is a long motion, so. Do you have, do you have something else before I make it?
Question first, yeah.
Okay, make a question.
Raise his light. Yeah. The question I have is, is for Matt, can we, if we. If we regulate or put in there some stipulation about no section eight. How, how will that remain? It, first of all, can we legally? And then, is that, if we did, is that enforceable? Can you speak to that, please?
It, it, it's like when I teach sometimes and say that if you do this, you can't get sued. And then usually somebody from my office will remind me, anybody can sue you, I mean, it doesn't mean you won't get sued. You could impose that restriction. I wouldn't look forward to the federal lawsuit that would come if it ever went that route. Because there are certain federal statutes that would be implicated by that, so I would not recommend that you include that restriction.
And James, just because this is my industry too, I mean, you're talking about probably fifteen hundred a month, twelve, fifteen hundred a month on these apartments, right?
Well, I, I'm not necessarily, I mean, they're, they, today, they own it. And they say no section eight, but that doesn't mean that five years down the road, somebody else is going to come in and buy it and say, uh, we're turning them all into section eight. I mean, there's no, there's no way to.
If there's another couple trillion done, probably.
I was just hoping.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's, I did.
All right, so I'll make this motion. To approve the application for rezoning of property from C three to simplified planned unit development. Proposed spud would allow for mixed-use C three commercial uses as well as R three residential apartment uses. Location is forty-six fourteen North MacArthur Boulevard, War Acres, seven three one two two.
Second. That's me. I'm just kidding, it was Tucker. No, it's Tucker.
Roger.
Don't throw anything at me.
Sometimes, guys, I do not tell the difference.
Schmidt.
Yay.
Tucker.
Yes.
Godwin.
Yay.
Ryan.
Yay.
Von Thayer.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mission brief.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Welcome to War Acres.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
You can tell them the park is Rogers and one that has hair.
I know, it's.
That doesn't come through in their voice, though.
Oh, no. But I, but I do like.
Item number nine, discussion possible action to authorize Chief Coy to purchase some washing machines and some dryers and a bunch of other kitchen aid ranges.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Tucker.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Von Thayer.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Godwin.
Yay.
Ryan.
Yay.
Mayor.
Item number ten, discussion possible action on the annual contract with Pafford EMS. This should be a pretty quick one, they haven't gone up on their rate. Do a fabulous job for us, and I think Chief Coy is very happy with them.
Very, we all are.
Anytime I have an issue, taking care of immediately, I may have no, I have no issues with them. They sometimes be our fire department, they're usually there right afterwards. And our other choice is to go to a different company that I don't think anybody wants to go back to.
I'd like to make a motion to.
Hold it, hold it, I got a question.
Okay.
Item number two in this, if we're voting on this as a contract, shouldn't it have some dates? For applica, for it to be applicable? It, it does have dates.
They actually have, and I, did I change it to twenty?
Because they're blank in here, it's got twenty-two, but there's no.
When they fix that.
Is it calendar year?
Yes, it is calendar year.
I missed that, I was looking for that, and it's got twenty-one, twenty-two, but it didn't. And in.
It'll say January one, it'll say December three, I always write those in after we approve them.
Okay. In the item fourteen and subsection C, it talks about the city, she'll have the option to. Of non-compliance reduced to subsidy set forth in paragraph twelve by eight percent. Except paragraph twelve doesn't have any money in it. It doesn't even have a money list, dollar amount listed. How would you know? What you would reduce by eight percent? Where are you at? Number fourteen.
Good catch.
Subsection C.
Probably their annual fee, but we paid it monthly.
Which should reference eleven, not twelve.
Yeah.
They should read number eleven.
It, it should be paragraph eleven.
So not that it's a big deal, but.
Good catch.
Those were the only questions I had on it. Go ahead.
I'll let you make the motion, you made the changes, yeah. Go ahead.
As I say, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the contract with the changes noted.
Second.
I also had a random question, is this Samaritan changed the name or?
Samaritan changed the name at Pafford, yes.
Yeah.
Pafford bought him out.
Cool. It was already done.
I made the motion, somebody second.
Roger second.
I think.
Von Thayer.
Jim did, sorry, I heard it.
It was a tie, everybody.
I didn't hear it.
It wasn't me. It wasn't over here this time.
Evans.
Yes.
Von Thayer.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yay.
Ryan.
Yay.
Godwin.
Yay.
Mayor.
Yay. Item number eleven, discussion only on chickens and roosters and rabbits. Are they illegal now?
No.
They're not illegal, but they're not legal.
Well, they're not.
They're, they're non-conforming.
So, I mean, I tried to outline it in the memo, your animal code prohibits certain types of animals. It then pretty much allows all other animals. And then clearly through time, there were issues with dogs and cats, so there are additional requirements for dogs or cats, which was somewhat ironic because it's harder to have a dog than it is to have a chicken or a rooster, at least per the city code. The mayor had some concerns raised to him, so he asked me to take a look into it. In the memo, I presented you with some options of how other metro area cities are addressing the topic right now. We put it on for discussion only, it may be that there's nobody that really wants me to prepare anything and just keep the status quo. It may be that somebody wants me to prepare something. I, I don't think the mayor or I really had a particular thing to bring you, which is why we brought it for discussion only, was to get some feedback. Do you want us to prepare an amendment to their ordinance?
No.
Want any of the options that we presented, or do you want to keep the status quo?
I would like to have a, a rooster ban. I got no problems with chickens, but roosters don't even know when the sun comes up anymore, they just go all day. That's my only issue. And, you know, we may want to put a limit on how many chickens you can have in a, in a standard city lot. That was one of my questions, and where you can put the coop, because apparently, or other ex-councilman, former councilman, they're right up close to his house and they stink. Yeah, exactly.
And can we do something about small children, like the hours they're outside? Sometimes they're up really early and they're out really late at night. I mean, you're opening up a whole thing, like really, it's just dogs and cats.
And dogs bark at night.
Yeah, I've got my neighbor, their dog's out all night, but, I mean.
Yeah, but you can't set up a dog either.
Would you like to look at this, put this on an ordinance? Yes, I have been exposed to. I have been exposed to the rooster issue before, so...
I'll put you in charge of working with the man on that.
Okay.
What about ducks? They're dirty.
I mean, seriously though, because I've got a neighbor that's behind me that has chickens and ducks. I hear them quacking in the evenings.
They're very tasty.
I've heard that.
Does he share?
They're a little bit greasy, though. Heard that too. They're a little bit.
I guess our discussion is...
I guess we'll put that in, work with Matt on that.
Monkeys?
I don't, I'll be honest, I'm pretty sure that he's got some roosters with his chickens and he's got the ducks, and none of them bother me.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I've been in my backyard and early in the morning, late at night, and I've, I hear roosters crowing from in the distance, and I, but, I mean, but I haven't had one right outside my window at 3:00 in the morning, so I don't...
And like the bands they have.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to item number 11, formal discussion... 12, I'm sorry. Formal presentation discussion on fiscal year 2022 budget, and set the hearing date for this.
I sent you guys out one week or two ago, that was the first preliminary. Went back in, did some tweaking, checked numbers, make sure that I hadn't estimated high or too low on some things. I was asked to make some changes, and so I made those changes. I believe you all were informed on what those changes were already earlier. And really, what we need to do tonight is, if you have any questions or see something that you want me to change or want me to do something with, other than that, we just need to set a date for the hearing. And I have it set for December the 13th at 6:00 PM, it's a Monday.
Right before council meeting.
So, just need to make sure everybody could be here.
What'd you say, Monday?
The day, the day before.
Oh, the day before.
What is that date?
It's the Monday before the December meeting.
Of December?
I know, I'm sorry.
Monday week before, right, you said the 13th, Pam?
We've got a calendar in front of us now.
Hey, we do have a calendar.
December the 13th at 6:00 PM.
That's what I was saying, 13th, so... A week before your council.
I'll be back that day, next day. It does not...
Well, wait, no, because wouldn't the...
It's the week before, it's the second week of December.
Yeah, council meeting on the 21st.
The first, the first is Wednesday, so...
Can we push it past the 14th to meet, that way I'll be back?
We have to do it by the 15th, right, Pam?
Have to.
So, the 14th, that'd be possible? That's a planning commission meeting.
14th would be a planning commission meeting here, though.
So, the 15th?
Yeah.
What time's the planning commission, though, they're at 7:00, right?
They're at 7:00.
I mean, not to jinx it, but it seems like our budget meeting is often very, very short. So, if we did it, it even...
15th should be trial night.
6:00 or 6:30.
It's also trial night.
On the 15th.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the 14th, on planning commission night, if we did it.
Before that.
I thought you said the 15th was the court.
Wednesday's court night.
Right.
So, Tuesday.
And, and, and planning commission night's juvenile court. So, let choose his juvie court.
Oh.
Sorry, we'll be out of here in January, hopefully if I get 911.
So, like, is there, who can't make the 13th, yes, okay.
I'd say we still...
That's fine.
Stay with the 13th. 13th is about the only day we can do it, because on the 14th, we've got planning commission and juvenile court.
If you, you could send whatever questions or concerns you have to Pam, right, before?
Yeah, I can send an email.
So, do we have to make a motion for this, or do we just say that's when we're having the meeting?
Were you guys okay with what I put for park equipment?
Yes.
Did you see what I put?
I, I looked at it, that was going to be my question, was, was that for any new parks? Or was that just for fixing the parks we already have?
Updating the ones that we have.
Well, what I did was I just put park equipment.
Right.
And I just guessed 75,000 per ward, so that everybody got a share.
And what did, what did they get last, like this year?
For...
50.
In the past, we've put 50,000 a year total, so...
So, I mean, something's better than that.
But it's been, but it's been, it's been probably three years since we've done a park. The last park we did was, uh...
The one right behind.
The one on Redmond, right?
No, we didn't do that, it was just the one.
We had something at Redmond?
Nope, we had not.
No, just on like 50... No, just behind the old city hall.
Yeah, I thought we talked about...
City Hall on Cherokee Hills.
But it can be used in any, any ward. My thinking was if everybody wanted to split it, so each ward could have some...
Yeah, absolutely, yep, that's good.
I think we could spend $75,000 if we started far.
Thank you, easily. I appreciate it.
So, we're looking at the 13th, if that works.
That works.
Okay. Can you do a motion on that?
The 13th?
Yeah.
I just needed to make sure.
At what time?
I don't want to send the publication and then everybody's seen that.
At what time are we doing it, 7:00, 6:00?
It'll be 6:00.
Okay.
At 7:00, you said?
Here in really tiny print, because this right here is what gets published.
Pam, you did say 7:00?
6:00.
6:00.
6:00.
6:30 for you.
And we've done number 13, so now we've got number 14.
Get back from work.
Then Von Thayer, we'll start with you.
Just want to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving and thank police department, fire department, and higher city staff. Y'all just do a great job, and I really appreciate it.
Don.
Last month, I congratulated and thanked Pam for all the work she did with the, with the grant applications, I know that's a hard process. I know Mike did the same thing with the public works, trying to get our money back from FEMA. So, it was almost a million dollars when he got done with that, so I just wanted to make sure he got the accolades he needed, because that's, that's not fun to put those together. Best thing you can do is say it's done, so, thank you, Mike. That's all, yeah.
Ms. Schmidt?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out, it was almost a full house again, that's pretty good. I really didn't have anything else, other than you're probably going to talk about the Christmas thing, right? Christmas tree thing, so I'll leave that for him, so, thank you.
Yeah, I'll start, go Roger, we'll just do it backwards.
Okay, you can go with me. So, we would thank you for all your service with being chairman, really appreciate you being over there. Police Fire, as always, Mike, thank you for everything you all do, planning and everybody. I'm going to be, the reason why I won't be here is I'm going to be leaving to Cameroon and to Kenya, and I'll be actually representing the city of War Acres in Cameroon with their prime minister. So, I'll be over there speaking, so I get to put us on a cool stage in the world, so it's going to be pretty awesome. But just thankful for how the city works, the fact that we can be up here and we can talk serious, and we can also have other discussion and have a good time. So, I'm really appreciative of this council.
Ms. Tucker?
Just echo everything else on, I appreciate all the city departments and appreciate the citizens that come out and listen and talk and participate. That's what it's all about, that's all I've got.
Ms. Ryan?
I actually would like to wish all of our citizens and staff a very happy Thanksgiving. It seems, although each of us thank the city staff, it just seems like this year, more than, more than years past, there has not been the era of thankfulness that there normally is surrounding this time of year. And so, I just certainly want to hope, hope that that comes back soon. And so, happy Thanksgiving to all the citizens and staff.
Thanks, sir. And I'd like to thank Pam for doing such a great job on the budget. Next time, though, you need to put more money at the end of it.
Money at the end of it, pull it out of your personal account.
And I'd also like to thank all the other department heads, everybody, all the department heads have worked very, very hard, they put in way more than their 40 hours that people think they do. I'd like to thank the council for the job that they do, for your work with me and your suggestions that helped me. Like to wish everyone here and everyone watching on TV or on one of the computers to have a very happy Thanksgiving. Remember, my favorite saying is that Thanksgiving, which is leftovers, are for quitters. Do not forget the tree lighting ceremony December 2nd at 6:00 PM, which has been moved because of street closings back to City Hall. Make sure you see Santa Claus and his elves from 6:00 on December 2nd. Santa Claus is all ready to go. Ah, not, I was going to go on the next subject. How about a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
It's my favorite item.
Right here.
And that was Mike, Schmidt?
Yes.
Schmidt? Schmidt?
Yay.
Godwin?
Yay.
Ryan?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Call the city of War Acres Public Works Authority meeting to order, declare a quorum. Consent dockets, items A, B, C, and D, and item 3, anything to remove from the consent docket.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A through D.
Godwin?
Yay.
Tucker?
Yay.
Ryan?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yes, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn on this one.
Still moved.
Second.
Godwin?
Yay.
Ryan?
Yay.
Tucker?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yes. Call the city of War Acres Economic Development Authority meeting to order, declare a quorum. Item 2, consent docket, items A and B, and item 3, anything to remove from the consent docket.
Motion to approve A and B.
Second.
Ryan?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yay.
Schmidt?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yes. Item number 4, discussion of possible action on agreement with retail strategies